All this meeting in order. Please join us for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag, to the citizens of America, to the republic of our land, one nation, under God, indivisible, infinite, and eternal.
Please remain standing for a moment of silent reflection for our servicemen and women throughout the world and for those who have passed away in our community. Roll call, please.
Mr. Smol.
Here.
Mr. Schuster.
Present.
Dr. Rothschild.
Here.
Mr. McAndrew.
Present.
Mr. King.
Okay, there will be a motion this evening to move item 5B to sixth and seventh order for final vote. This ordinance is to extend the local declaration of emergency as a result of the localized flooding that occurred on September 9th, 2023, to October 13th of 2023. Anyone who would like to speak on this piece of legislation may do so in fourth order during citizen's participation.
If I could make a motion to take from the table, file the council number 87, 2023.
Second.
There's a motion on the floor and a second to take from the table, file of council number 87 of 2023. This ordinance increases the debt proceeds account and the court awards account by $3,790,000 to allow for payment of unbudgeted legal settlement payments. It is being taken from the table and placed in seventh order for a final vote. On the question? Well, on the question, I ask for this to be broken out, all right? These are two, one's a court-awarded settlement and one isn't. One was a settlement with a company that claims that there was a breach of contract, where actually they were a breach of contract, where they were involved in an investigation with the former mayor. So I can't in good conscience award that type of behavior. So since it's still bundled, I'll be voting no.
I will not, I will also not be voting for this tonight. There may have been a possibility of me voting for it if it was separated, but since it has not been separated, I will be a no vote for this piece of legislation.
So signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
No.
No. The ayes have it and so moved.
I would like to make a motion to take from the table Resolution Number 311 of 2023.
There's a motion on the floor and a second. Oh, I'm sorry, is someone second and I jumped?
Second.
Okay. There is a motion on the floor and a second to take from the table Resolution Number 311 of 2023. This resolution is a contract with the Lethen Corporation to provide the city's fire department with the first responder mental health and wellness mobile application. It is being taken from the table and placed in seventh order for a final vote. On the question?
On the question, I'm also going to be voting no for this. I don't think there's any substitute for mental health and I don't think an application on a telephone is that substitute. I would much like to see this money spent elsewhere.
So on the question, I was back and forth with this. I am the chairman of public safety, okay? And do I care about the health and welfare and safety of our brave police and firefighters? I do. I heard from both sides, I heard the rationale from both chiefs tonight, I've heard, yes, I did hear from the union members because I asked them. I know chief judge is like, well, you know, somebody reached out to you. I have no problem with that. I represent them too. So with discussion with both, I'll give this a try. Because I don't want to say it's only 18,000, but I'll approve a one-year contract. I want to see if it does what it says or what they say it's going to do. And then after that, I'll keep my eye on it, but I'm okay with a supplemental piece like this. Maybe we could have talked about it more because we didn't. It just was brought to us. We had to ask for an explanation. It should have been done beforehand. We should have had a caucus before it was introduced. But I'm still happy that we had the caucus. I'll support this with some reservation. I'll keep my eye on it and then we'll see next year when there's a renewal. If it pans, pans out and it bears some fruit and it helps our brave firefighters and police officers, it's wonderful, well, maybe we'll extend it. But if it doesn't, and then we'll have, we'll have a, have a second look or take a second thought on it. So all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed?
No.
The ayes have it and so moved. Please dispense with the reading of the minutes, Mr. Volenberg.
Third order, 3A, single tax office city, Scranton School District, third quarter real estate tax update received October 11th, 2023. 3B, code enforcement report dated October 4th, 2023 for city council received October 10th, 2023. 3C, reports received October 10th, 2023 regarding payment in lieu of taxes, letters sent and pilot payments as of September 25th, 2023. 3D, correspondence dated October 11th, 2023 from Mayor Page G. Cognetti and City Council President William King to the Scranton School District and Lackawanna County Commissioners regarding storm-related tax relief discussion. 3E, emergency declaration received October 13th, 2023 related to localized flooding that occurred on September 9th, 2023 and extending emergency powers necessary through October 20th, 2023. 3F, controllers report for the month ending September 30th, 2023.
Are there any comments on any of the third order items? If not, received and filed. Do any council members have any announcements at this time?
Yes, I have one. On Saturday, October 21st at 12:00 PM, at 1141 Capous Avenue in Scranton, there is going to be an axe-throwing fundraiser for Warrior Strong organization. It's $40 per player. That helps the veterans, the veterans' family members and first responders find community and camaraderie camaraderie through health and wellness so they overcome the sense of detachment and disconnection and isolation that they often experience in civilian life. So that's this Saturday, or Saturday the 21st at 12:00 PM. That's all I have.
Anyone else?
I have an announcement or two. First, tomorrow, Wednesday, Boscovs will be holding its annual Friends Helping Friends Charity Shopping Day, and that's going to take place from, all day from 8:00 AM to 11:00 PM. And if you donate $5, you'll be donating $5 to one of 61 participating local nonprofits and receive a 25% off shopping pass that can be used almost anywhere in the store. And some of the organizations that are participating include the Friends of the Scranton Public Library, Dress for Success Lackawanna, and Friends of the Poor. And the second announcement that I want to make, this Saturday, the NAACP of Lackawanna County will be hosting their inaugural Freedom Fund Gala, and that's going to be taking place at Fear Relies starting at 6:00 PM. So you can go online to purchase tickets if you're interested in attending that. That's all. Thank you.
Anyone else?
Mr. McAndrew.
Yes, sir.
So first of all, of all, I want to thank you all for your support. As you know, unfortunately, I was unable to attend the meeting last week due to a medical procedure. I'm still recovering from that medical procedure. I feel fortunate that I'm able to participate remotely this evening, but I want to thank all of you for your well wishes and your support. And the other thing I would like to do is thank all, you know, of our local volunteers who helped support the 26th Annual Steam Town Marathon, which happened on October 8th, Sunday, October 8th. It was a great success. We brought runners in from all over the United States, close to 1,000 runners. It was a huge success. We raised funds for St. Joseph's Center, so we're happy to do that. We're happy to support the local economy here in the city by bringing those runners in from all over the country. So that's about it for right now. Thank you.
Okay, and I have one quick announcement. So at the marketplace at Steam Town, Sunday, October 29th, 2023, starting at 1:00 PM, there's a hunt, a Halloween egg hunt and search for several golden tickets, special prizes, money and art-haz movie tickets. And then there's a parade at 1:30. Trick-or-treaters will parade throughout the marketplace. Prizes will be awarded for best costume, first prize $100, second runner, two sec, two second runners up for $50. And then after that, there'll be a party. Following the parades, there'll be a DJ and karaoke in center court, $50 prize for the best singer, all right? And there'll be free gift bags for the first 300 kids. So it sounds like a really nice time for our community. And so next we'll have, oh, wait a second. We just have citizen's participation.
Fourth order, citizen participation.
So first up, we have Mr. Lee Morgan.
Yes, first thing I have here is, you know, probably the city, the council, ECTV and the mayor are probably going to answer my complaint to the federal government, to the federal court this week or relatively soon, or do a motion to dismiss, but I think we're going to have a really great time. And I just hope that all you guys stick around and enjoy yourselves because I think it's really important for people to understand that they have rights and I think that government should respect those rights, even though the council and the mayor don't respect those rights. And we've created a propaganda channel with ECTV. Hopefully in the end, we'll get all the answers I asked for here at the council and we'll remove, remove the board of directors of ECTV and the station manager. And maybe we'll lose the mayor and the council when this is all done, when the people have a good idea what's taking place. And I think that the residents of Scranton should really consider organizing a group and doing something about all the flooding in the city and suing the city and suing the council and maybe the mayor and the rec authority for what's happened at Naught Park and removal of the slide. Because you can talk to this council until you just lay down dead on the ground and nothing will happen for you. And when I see all these yard signs throughout the city, I wonder, are there this many policemen or firemen or DPW workers or teachers in this city that can push such flawed candidates on an electorate over decades and decades and cause the destruction of a city and not even look over their shoulder? And the second thing I have here today is, you know, I don't, we run a gay pride flag outside for a month. I really think that the Israeli flag should be flying over the, under the American flag. And I just think that the President of the United States is responsible for the war that's taking place in the Middle East because of his patronage of Iran. I mean, considering that now it's in discussions that John Kerry was sharing classified information with the Iranians to try to get a deal for the climate czar. And you just take a look at all the pain and suffering. And we've named things after Joe Biden, the city, that should be stripped. I mean, we've got a president that's caused so much pain and suffering and has pulled out in Afghanistan and just abandoned Americans. And now we find that the weapons they left behind there, they're using on the Israelis now. And we have to ask ourselves as a people, because we listened to all the silly stuff the Democrats have said over my entire lifetime. Don't forget, Joe Biden said that if you ain't, you ain't black if you don't vote for Joe Biden. Look at all the damage he's done to our country. And it just continues. And now I think he's over there trying to tell the Israelis that maybe they shouldn't go over there and take Gaza. It's, it's a shame when a country so small has to be the leader of the free world because we've abdicated that role just by what our president's done. He might be the Antichrist walking this earth, to be honest, with everything he's done to our country. You know, stop drilling, green technology, exporting jobs, you know, borrowing trillions and trillions of dollars, stepping to the podium and lying about almost everything he says to the American people and the media just doesn't care. Anything you fact check that he says is almost every bit of is a lie. And look where we are as a country. And then when you look at what's going on with these people in Israel where they were, I don't know, had their stomach ripped out and the baby ripped out of them, shot in the back, have their kids raped in front of them and then shoot the parents, this is all his doing. He's been a terrible ally and a terrible leader, and I think the American people should stand up for once and speak their mind, not just here, but everywhere. Because this stuff happened 75 years ago in Europe and the American Jews knew they were killing the Jews in Europe and they were living too good. They just ignored it. And listen to what Frank Rosen said when he did the interview, when he took his in-laws to the, to the death camps and he told them not to go there. It's just amazing what's still going on in this world.
Thank you, Mr. Morgan. Next up, Mr. Mike Mancini.
Let's get back to local stuff because it's easier to fix a pothole than it is to fix something nationally, at least most of the time here in Scranton. I have two questions for this, this body today. Explain to me the Right to Know Act. I filed a Right to Know request last Wednesday for all documents pertaining to the sale of Scranton Parking Authority and the Scranton Sewer Authority. Same documents that were received by W1EP and other media outlets. I was told today that I'm going to find out tomorrow. Is it five days or five business days? And then after that, is it 30 days or 30 business days?
So Mike, what I have here in front of me is a response, someone else asked last week, maybe it was you. The city Right to Know policy is response within five days with the 30-day extension if additional investigation is needed.
So as of today, they didn't provide me with the necessary information, so they're in violation. Next question. Did this body send the letter to the mayor requesting the audit through the state auditor general's office for the parking authority and sewer authority?
So what I have here in response to your inquiry last week, we sent a request, no, there has been a request sent to the Scranton Sewer Authority for an update, no, I'm sorry, that's a different audit. Let me see. We received, maybe it's not on here, oh, the request for the forensic audit for the Scranton Sewer Authority sale on December 31st, 2016 is under review and correspondence will be sent to the PA Auditor General and/or PA Attorney General as warranted.
So it's as warranted, so it's up to the mayor to actually send out that information?
Correct. Well, as of right now, that's, the request was sent down to administration. This is the response we have.
Okay.
But I, I can speak to it a little bit. So I, you know, after you asked last week, I do remember that that was a request by both the school district and this body, I remember. And I remember the response we got was, they were busy, they didn't have the manpower to do it. And in addition to that, that we couldn't request, this is how I remember it, I could be wrong, we couldn't request, the sewer authority itself would have to request that audit of themselves.
So is that actually going to be followed through and sent to the auditor general's office or are we just?
Well, I, so we got a response. I'll make sure it's followed through, but we'll.
From the mayor's office?
Correct. The response we got was from city administration, so we'll give them a couple of days.
Okay.
And then we'll follow up and see if it took place.
So because here's my question, right? How many attorneys does it take to close the sewer authority? And the answer was 50, $3.1 million, okay? As opposed to doing a forensic audit, all the mayor has to do is grab the box for the Scranton Parking Authority, Scranton Sewer Authority, take a look at it, make an informed decision. Doesn't take 50 people to put in a light bulb, right? And at the end of the day, Limerick Township, Montgomery County, sold the same type of, of water system, water treatment system that we did, $71.1 million, 40% of what we sold ours for approximately. Two law firms, $200,000, all right? So we're looking at, what, almost $2.5 million possibly that was just thrown at people for no particular reason, all right? When you have a disgraced mayor who receives funds from a law firm and then funnels two closings to that same law firm, and he said it himself at his town hall meeting within a matter of five minutes, all right? Transparency, madam mayor, at the end of the day, we're really as good as who we surround ourselves with. And it's up to you to make this decision based upon what you see in front of you. Do the right thing because this city is not what I envisioned it as being when I was a young child, all right? So many things have changed, blight in neighborhoods, all right? People just giving up on themselves, all right? And then having tax bills that are through the roof. Majority of it, again, of course, is the Scranton School District, 60% of the face is the tax bill, all right? At the end of the day, it's a matter of what we do. An audit can be done if it's requested properly. Please do the right thing. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Mancini.
Good evening, council. Before I get to the city stuff that I like to talk about, I just want to make a brief comment, if I will, about the situation in the Middle East.
Excuse me, sir. Would you please step closer to my microphone?
Could that, is that better?
They're having trouble hearing you out here.
Okay, here we go.
Thank you very much.
All right. So before I get to the city issues, I just want to make a quick comment on the Middle East. And I want to touch on what the chief said over here earlier today. So the chief said something about PTSD and I know a little bit about post-traumatic stress disorder. And the key to that is to be alert beforehand of shocking information. And the shocking information is, is that this country is going to go to war soon and we're going to be aligned with Israel. And I just want to say before you and the Scranton, because they're going to have sons and daughters and the ships and everything like that, we are the most technology-advanced country in the world. And we will outsmart the enemy and we will prevail the enemy. And when President Biden, our hometown hero, goes to Israel tomorrow and looks Netanyahu in the eye, he's going to say, I'm with you. And we are going to change the Middle East together and we're going to establish dominance there and we will reign there for 1,000 years. So just be aware that we are going to outsmart them. We have the technology and we're going to win technology-wise. It's going to be about three and a half years, but we're going to come out on top. All right, now, council, I got to tell you something about this thing. Last week I was over here, okay? And so council, please, you, you got to do something because there's this, this noise. Ah, now it doesn't work. Oh, yes, it does. Mute. This is the parking garage, not Mulberry Tower parking garage. This is the city parking garage. And it won't stop until that gate comes down, council. We cannot sleep, council. They're going nuts over there.
So you brought this to us last week. I don't want to take up your time, but I have a response to your inquiry. We sent it.
Yeah, what was the response? You said, oh, we can't help you, that's Mulberry Tower.
No, no, I didn't say that. We didn't say that.
Yes, you did. It's on, it's on video.
Okay, well, maybe we can't help you if you give me a chance here. So ABM is reviewing the gate and warning alarm on Mulberry Street exit for sound adjustment. So you were heard, so along with the alarm.
Okay, so.
So we'll get, we'll get back to you.
All right, so, all right, so I guess, you know, it's not going to be done in the five days, but I guess they're not going to drag their feet on this for, you know, five months, right? ABM is going to look at this in the next three weeks or three days?
No, it didn't say, it didn't give me a timetable, but we got a response from them, so.
All right, it's a step in the right direction.
Keep an, keep an eye on it for us and we'll, and we'll touch base.
If you could just do something, maybe lower it or something, so I'll, I'll check back with you in three weeks because.
Okay, I know about three weeks, but, okay.
So, okay. And the second thing I don't want to talk about is I really want to get five minutes with the mayor. The only closest I got to the mayor was through Isaiah. And, and all I want is to talk to the mayor is about these air horns, council. So, you know, when I was a little boy, I used to watch that Twilight Zone. And I remember one episode, the guy is sleeping and a cruise ship is coming through, it's pinned the bedroom window at 2:00 in the morning. And that's what happens with these fire engines that go, with the firefighters that go crazy at 2:00 in the morning. They go, our air horn, happy on that air horn. And it feels like a cruise ship is coming through my bedroom window. So I want to know, is it possible the mayor can put these kind of signs within a 100-foot radius of Mulberry Tower? Something like this, so that there's no air horn? Have some mercy, council. That's all I have.
Okay, thank you. Next up, Mr. Virgil Argenta.
Virgil Argenta. Another Mr. King no-show.
He's participating by phone right now.
The city of Scranton had a vacant lot for sale, 513 Lackawanna Avenue. Two bidders bid on this lot. Bidder number one bid $37,500 with a long-range full business plan to enhance the downtown save and refurbish a longstanding historical Scranton building using all private funding. Bidder number two bid $25,000, has no long-term plan, presented no business plan for the property, but is politically connected. You would think it's a no-brainer. Bidder number two won the bid. You want to check with the SRA, Scranton Redevelopment Authority, ask for their reasoning on why they accepted the worst possible deal when the meeting agenda had recommended them to vote for bidder number one, which was the better deal. It's not just that it's the right thing to do. How are you allowed to take the worst deal for the city and its citizens? It's not just that it's the right thing to do. How are you allowed to take the worst deal? When you have an administration that professes all about transparent, well, I have been in real estate development my entire life. This deal is less than transparent. Highest bidder with the best plan wins in the rural world, but not in Scranton, which brings me to the next issue, city grants. What are the guidelines? Who gets them? What do they advertise so the normal Tom, Dick or Harry could apply for them and get them? Or is it not part of how city funds are released? How are they publicized when they're dispersed? And why does it always seem that it's just the people that are politically connected to get the grants? Do these city grants have a timeframe? Are they interest-bearing accounts? Are they transparent, are they transferable with the sale of a property? Are they auditing them? And if so, who's overseeing the auditing process of these city grants? One grantee received $750,000. That's three-quarters of a million dollars. That's 3/4 of a million dollars. And we are lucky if 10,000 worth of work was done to this old property. So my question is, who keeps track of this? Who's keeping track of his property at the beach? And why aren't any of these grants being used for people who desperately need them? There were people in here two weeks ago regarding Kaiser Valley flooding. The mayor had the audacity to tell them that their loan's available at a 7% interest rate when today in the newspaper, they're bragging about spending $500,000 to help a private business pay off its loans. Imagine what $500,000 could do to help the flood victims, to the people who had lived and supported Scranton their entire lives. Not people who moved here from New York five years ago that don't know how to run their business and don't live in the city of Scranton. Now, in conclusion, please get out and be an educated voter. Vote for people that genuinely care about the city, who have lived here their whole life and want to make change for their neighborhoods, including those sixth graders they went to school with. These sixth graders are here paying taxes and paying your salaries. These same sixth graders all think for themselves. They're no one's puppets. They are Scranton strong. Another issue, Friday night, we had another brutal fight at the stadium. Are we ever going to address that? I know it's the school district's part, but everybody deserves to be safe. Work with the police department. It's about time that somebody works together and gets things done here. We had three homeless guys throw a woman in the river two weeks ago who was bringing food. Anybody addressed that? May want to look into that because you all seem to think that it's okay for the homeless people to be in our town. Where are we at with the fire billing? Do we have any update on that?
We do not.
And I'd like to ask for, item number G is an introduction to a resolution. Then maybe we could table that until we get some clarification on a certain individual who's got some issues with licensing. And as of today, the rumor's swelling that there's a bench warrant out for that same individual. So in order to do the right thing, maybe we should just table that until we have our affairs in order? Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Argenta. Mr. Volnerberg, could you please reach out to the police department and inquire about three homeless people throwing a woman in the river who brought them food?
I will, sir.
Okay, thank you. That's horrific and needs to be addressed. It needs to be known, too.
She had to force it in the meeting. The mayor said that she'd give her leave next week. Really? Seriously?
Thank you. Next up, Ms. Joan Hodawanitz.
Joan Hodawanitz, Scranton. Mr. McAndrew, maybe I wasn't paying attention, but did you start the meeting with roll call? Did? Oh, good.
Okay.
I want to thank Council and the mayor for the letter that was sent requesting a meeting with the county commissioners and the school district regarding the flooding tax relief for those people that were affected. I know that this is not going to solve all their problems, but I don't want to see them having to do what my parents had to do, pay taxes on a condemned building for five years. And I think that's a good way to begin and also to get all the taxing authorities talking Also, more good news. I saw on the city's website that the delinquent refuse fee database has been updated as of September 30th. Bad news is the total amount that's owed is now up to like $11.8 million, but at least the information is available to the city and citizens. The firefighter's contract that was supposed to be on the website after 120 days is 196 days. And Offburg was paid $22.9,000 in September. Are they still dotting i's and crossing t's on that document?
So what I have here in front of me is that, of course, again, we sent a request to city administration for information from city labor council on when the CVA may appear on the city website. But as of today, we receive nothing. Right, Mr. Volnerberg?
That's correct, sir.
So it's going to be when?
We don't know, and I'm with you on this, believe me. So, you know, send it again. This is unacceptable.
Yeah, I mean, all the union contracts should be on the website because city employers are paid by tax dollars, and those should be public documents.
Well, every school district has them on their website. I'm just saying, we should be...
Yeah, I understand. And I was originally told that they needed 120 days to, you know, tidy up the documents and get it all, all the relevant, you know, things into one document instead of this piece and that piece. It's been 196 days and no end in sight. And I suspect the same thing's going to happen with the police contract, which was signed, arbitrated in July. Now, the DPW contract went on very quickly, so I don't know what's going on. What's the status of the 2022 audit?
So also, a request was sent to the Scranton Sewer Authority for an update on the 2022 audit and a tentative date for emergency meeting of the SSA Board for approval of the audit.
When's their emergency meeting?
We didn't, did we get anything back on this, too?
No data, if you ask.
Well, you give me the date, and I'll go down and kick ass and take names, so to speak.
You'll be the first to know when we find out.
Item 7A, the Borwick High Fidelity Contract. I asked last week which was the true cost. The Borwicks cited $24,599.84. Business administrator says it's $23,389. Do we know?
Do we know that for sure? Did we get that back?
You may not want to pass that until you know what you're paying.
The difference in the two amounts is due to a 6% sales tax.
Okay, so it's actually the higher amount?
The higher amount.
Okay.
But I'm waiting to see if that just qualifies the bid.
Okay, well, it's up to you if you want to pass it tonight. Item 5G, the appointment of Selena Andiapan for the land bake. Why wasn't her resume included in the backup?
It should have been. Guess what? We...
Yeah, you might want to have that added for next week and put it in order. Item 3C, the list for the pilots. I think somebody should have really looked hard at that list and scrubbed it. There are a couple duplications, like St. Vladimir's twice, St. Francis of Assisi closed a few years ago. In the emergency declaration, I see two dates. 3E says October 13th, October 20th, and 5B says October 13th. So which is it?
Okay.
Two different issues? So we're going to see new legislation next week to extend the...
Correct.
Okey-dokey. Thank you.
Thank you. Next up, we have Mr. Ron Elman.
Good evening, Council. How'd that get embroiled about these despicable jackals from Gaza? The former Americans that are there, they are supporters of these people, and they ought to stay there and rot, far as I'm concerned. A year or so ago, I stood here whining about WNEP's taxes. They were lowered, as you remember. Glanmore, theirs was lowered. I think Glanmore was from $800,000 to $200-some thousand. These properties that I spoke of, they were worth over, they were appraised at $400 million, and they have, you people just allowed us tax reductions left and right. Now we've got a city full of these developers that the mayor had been kissing their rear end for the last couple of years, and they have turned on us. They've shown their true colors, if you ask me. Downtown, downtown does look good. It's a big improvement, but these are wealthy businesses. And now, after Bozoni's grants and loan abatements and loan forgiveness and tax abatements that he all advocated in the past, they just forget all the good. You cannot give in to these tax reductions. What are they going to do? Force us to take the dollar parking garage back? And, you know, I think what we need is another Janet Evans, really. She went, she went out and tried for the people of this city. There's no one else seems interested. No one goes to the colleges, all these phony nonprofits. We got, we got some no English-speaking women dictating terms to the school board about closing schools. I had a teacher tell me at Sheetz one night last year, she quit. She said, I have children in there, have no intentions of ever learning. They don't speak English at home. She said, they wear the same clothes for three, four days because no one to get up. We have to feed them breakfast and lunch. She said it's just, it was too much for her. What are you people interested in, in our government? I saw in today's paper, all the problems going on in this area. They're worried about eight pickleball courts. One of them would be so noisy, you'll have nothing but complaints. I saw that on national television a couple of weeks ago. It makes a tremendous noise. Are these courts where somebody losing their home, the most precious thing, and there's nobody to help people here? How many people can afford an attorney to try to get their taxes reduced? I phoned one. He told me $1,500 to $3,000. He doesn't know anything about my finances and so forth. They're going to raise taxes because of the reassessment? You'd lose people, and others would be stuck like I am. They'll be stuck paying. My taxes right now are three times what they were 25 years ago, and that's not enough for the city. You know, the waiver queen downstairs, her administration, she lets them live wherever they want. I'm stuck here like a lot of you people out there, the ones listening. What can we do? Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Elman. Next up, Mr. Lenny Serebo.
Good evening, Council. Lenny Serebo, Kaiser Valley Flood Zone. I was reading this study on the flooding in Kaiser Valley. I had hoped that all you council members have read this study, too, to know what's going on there. Included in the study was pictures of the flooding. It was copies of the newspaper from November of 1959. And I'm telling you, those pictures looked identical to the pictures of what just happened last month in 2023. I mean, people getting rescued in boats, pictures of the floodwaters halfway up their houses. So I can't believe this has been going on so long, and I've been in this for 10 years now. But other residents there have said that, oh, this has been going on 40, 50 years now. Well, from those newspaper copies in 1959, it's actually 60 years of flooding. Oh my God, don't you think something should be done by now? Now, what Gary DeBilio, the Kaiser Valley Neighborhood Association president, has arranged to have a walk-around meeting in the neighborhood to take a look at the remaining devastation that's there. I understand that he asked the council members, is Mr. King hearing this right now? Okay, well, I want to ask, I know that Gary DeBilio is asking council members to come and do this walk-around to see the devastation. I understand that Mr. McAndrew is coming. I understand that Tom Schuster is coming. How about the rest of you guys? Do you care enough to spend a little time and come and see the devastation? Just give me a yes or no. Mr. Smurl?
So just so you know, Mr. Serebo, I don't know if Gary DeBilio talked with Mr. Smurl. He did talk with myself, though, and I agreed to come to the meeting on Thursday.
So he's coming?
I'm coming to the meeting on Thursday. I'm not sure if Mr. DeBilio reached out to...
Okay, I know you're coming, right? You know, that's what I was told.
And I am as well, but if it's an actual meeting...
Coming to the neighborhood, you know, to walk around, just a block or two and see the devastation.
Because we were informed that it's a meeting in addition to walking around. If it's a meeting, only, we can't have more than two of us present at a meeting, if you understand that.
Well, I'm not sure it's considered a meeting.
That can be clarified.
You know, to see, now...
I didn't receive an invite, but if I had, then I would have responded, yes.
So you're going to come? Thank you for caring.
If I'm able to with the Sunshine Act, we'll have to clear that.
So Mr. McAndrew, are you coming?
I'm coming, sure.
Okay, thank you for... Mr. Schuster?
Yes, I'm coming.
And Mr. Smurl?
I need to be told where it's at? That's all?
Right there, and you can't miss it, you know?
And when it is?
Look for the flooded houses. And what about Mr. King, then? Can you...
I'm currently recovering from a medical procedure, so unfortunately, I'm not able to attend at this time, but I'd gladly go through this...
Okay, I understand the medical procedure, then I'm hoping somehow you're going to follow up on it, look into it, ask questions, whatever, like that. Okay, thank you. That will be this Thursday at 4:30. Hopefully, everybody's done with their work for the day. All right. You know, in reading the study, one of the biggest things they recommended was the, in the proposed improvements, it said the best option is to study that, in the study, is to fix that 24-inch pipe that everybody got a lot of information on. Now, I just learned that they sent the camera down the 36-inch pipe at the corner of Dewey and Lafayette, and they found that pipe to be broken now. So maybe you check into that. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Next up, Mrs. Norma Jeffries.
The clock's even going. I haven't started to speak yet.
I haven't started to speak yet.
Okay, we can fix that.
Is that when it starts, at the podium? Sorry, I thought it started after I started to speak. Anyway, Norma Jeffries, Scranton resident, and it's good to be back after traveling, but it's good to be back to the city. And in my travels, I do see, every city has its issues, whether they're small cities or big cities, they all have their issues. So when you come home and you hear and see a lot of things, that Scranton's not so bad after all. One of the things that I wanted to talk about tonight, and I did hear while I was away, that there was a grant that was issued, I guess, for the street signs. And so, being that I wasn't here to hear all of it, I did go online and to pull the resolution, the resolution and the grant papers that were online about the grant that was in place for six hundred and sixty-eight thousand, nine hundred and eleven dollars for the Scranton Street Signs Project. As I was reading through it, it says that they will concentrate efforts on signs listed as poor, and that it goes on to talk about the different three segments of assessments and all. So I just got more confused as I was reading this. So then it did go back and to change it from this, this street signs as poor, and they will replace and slash install new street signs. So they are replacing as well as installing, and I guess the installing word is that they're missing, you know, because I kept looking for the word "missing" in this documentation. I did not see it. So, as we talked about, as this information talked about the grant, of course, it, I have questions since, how long does it take for a grant? I've been in Scranton now six and a half years, and going for seven years, and then that's when I started to notice just the poor condition of the street signs, because I kept getting lost. And so that's the first time that I approached council about the lack of street signs. So I'm just hoping that this grant that I'm reading about isn't going to take another six and a half or seven years before it is put into place. One of the things that the, that as I was reading this, and it was very informative for me, anyway, and it said that the city completed an assessment during the first phase of this project, the sign replacement and installation during the second phase, and we're moving forward to the final phase, which was identifying, misspelling word here, it says sins, in the city of Scranton that are listed as poor condition and in need of replacement. It was my understanding, when I went down to DPW, that there was a database already with over eight thousand entries in it. So I don't understand why they can't use that information to get started and why we have to do another phase. So maybe you can just answer for me, just how long does it take or how long will it be before the street signs are done or, you know, in place? I did, thought I had read that there was an RFQ out on it and that they were going for a vendor to work on the street signs, but I wasn't able to find any information on that online, and maybe I just wasn't putting the right search words in for it. But, you know, one of the things that I think one of the speakers from a few weeks ago spoke about was that there is a way to, you know, cover the street signs with some kind of sticker or something or other, you know, maybe that would be more economical, I don't know, I'm not in that business, and maybe it would be something that they can look into. One of the things that was a great piece of information, I don't know who did the narrative on it, was Exhibit A that was online, and it talked about, and it gave a full explanation of all the paperwork that I did print off about the street signs. So I'm just hoping that, moving forward, that the final phase really is the final phase, and that the final phase is the grant, and I'm just hoping that that's what that is. And along also with the city and the condition of our city of Scranton is the wall there on Lackawanna Avenue. You know, I'd just like to know a status of that, is it's crumbling day by day, week by week, it continues to crumble, and the trash pickup on Lackawanna Avenue, the bins are just overflowing with trash. And just one other thing, real quick, if I could just piggyback on what Dr. Rothschild said about the NAACP banquet this weekend, and there will be tickets at the door or at a event right, and that is, was this September, October, October twenty-first at six o'clock at Beer Rallies. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Waldenberg, could you please reach out to DPW and the administration about the grant, a timeline for that, and then the sign project itself?
I will, Mr. McAndrew.
Thank you. That's exhausted our lists. If anybody else would like to speak?
Hi, Doris Kloski, Hill Section resident. This address is kind of the blight blight. I brought this up to Mr. King when he was at the Hebron Hill Neighborhood Association meeting, about the dishes, the satellite dishes all over these houses. On my block alone, one house in the middle has seven satellite dishes. It's a house that has four apartments. It has seven satellite dishes on the front of it and the roof, and one big one down in the lawn in the front. I thought maybe council could do something with DirecTV to where if they're going, their customers are gonna put up the dishes, that when they disconnect, they come and get them. Because, I mean, it's all over the hill, you can see them as you're driving around, and they really look disgusting. So, the guy that owns that one house on my block, he had said that he, he's got it right now where they're taking the porches down, he's remodeling, and he, I asked him to please take down whatever dishes he can take, because I think the ones on the roof, they're afraid to put a hole in the roof, but the ones in the front, he said he would tell the, ask the contractors to take them down. But he informed me that when the person buys from Direc, when they hook up with DirecTV, he thinks that they actually buy the dish, because DirecTV doesn't want to come back out for them, and so they own the dish, so when they move, the dishes are still there. So I don't know, I think maybe the city can do something with DirecTV to kind of change that, because it really looks horrible. Okay, so that's, that's the one thing. The other thing I wanted to bring up was about that curb cutting that never happened. And when I called DPW about the curb on Olive Street in Colfax and the other one on East Gibson in Colfax, they told me they don't do it, that it's whoever the city had hired. So if you could just check on that again, I mean, winter's coming now, so we'll probably have to put it off again for another year, but it would be nice to be able to go up and down it without having to go around in the road, especially now when it's dark. Also, I noticed, and I'm sorry, because I didn't write down the name of the block, I thought I'd remember it, but when you drive over Colfax, Wheeler Avenue, going towards Ricardo's Market, if anybody knows where that is, I'm sure Jerry does, there's a stop sign at one of the intersections that the tree is blocking it. I mean, I know it's there, because I go there all the time, but other people that's new to the city may not see it until they're on top of it. So if you just take, somebody takes a ride down there, maybe they can notice it.
Which intersection is that? Which intersection?
It's a problem, I can't remember. There's Wheeler Avenue-
Is it Wheeler Avenue?
It's, I'm trying to think, it's Wheeler Avenue and it's not Ash Street where it goes around where the light is. It might be the, you know, where you go around for Prescott School? I think it's that one, on Wheeler, I can't think of the block. It might be like Ash Street.
Myrtle.
Right. There's also one on Ash Street, that when you come straight up Ash Street and you're between Taylor, maybe, and Prescott, there's another one that's real low that sometimes people might miss, but I think the trees now trimmed there, but I'm not, I'm not positive. Because I just know they're there, so I stopped. The other day, I was almost on top of it, and I go, oh my God, you know?
We'll ask for DPW to get out there and check out the trees.
And then I just have one other question. I was hearing people come here saying they can't talk to the mayor. Now, I know I talked to the mayor, because she was having these lunch things on her lunch hour, some kind of teas or coffees, because I went to one. Of course, I don't see them advertised anymore. Are they still doing that? Where people could just go in and talk to her, like, a certain day? So if they could maybe find out, maybe if you could find out from the mayor, possibly then when somebody else comes in and says, "We can't talk to her, we can't talk to her." If they're still doing that, find out where it's printed up. I think I had seen it in the newspaper the time I went, and I believe that was like last year. Time goes so fast, it could have been two years, you know? Okay, thank you.
Marie Schumacher, city resident. First, I'd like to thank whoever got the paving done between the end of Mountain Lake Road and Derby Avenue. It is, having to go over that four times a day, it's much nicer, and it should have been done that way in, in the very beginning. On three A, did any of you compare it with last year, any of those collections? Are we ahead of this of last year, or are we repeating last year? No? On three C, the pilots, that is so anemic. How many did, how many letters were sent out? We have, I didn't have time this week to get, yesterday and today to get how many?
I don't know, I forget it. I counted them last week, I don't have that in front of me, but maybe it was like seventy-seven? Do I believe, I believe, maybe it's more, it's definitely more than that, one hundred and seventy-seven, I think. Well, they're here to count, and, but only seven actually participated, which is unfortunate.
Yeah, that's, that's pretty anemic response. Are we going to follow up with telephone calls?
I'm not aware of what the follow-up process is with the city, we can inquire.
Could you find out and tell us next week? That would be nice.
Sure. Mr. Waldenberg? Take care of that, would you? Thank you.
And I, and I have to go on the street signs. We had, in my area, we had a lot of postings for a missing dog. And on the way coming home from school, we saw the missing dog, and we tracked it, we called in, and, and then today, we found that they were able to trap the dog and return it to the people who owned it. And my, my young friend, who comes here with me sometimes, was being a gentleman, and he asked if the woman, if she would like him to, him to go back and take down all of the signs that said there was a missing dog. So we spent about an hour and a half this afternoon taking down the signs, and a lot of street signs are really bad, and I can't wait for it to be done again. Now, wait a minute. In July, the planning, the planning commission approved the plans to build a convenience station and gas station at eleven thirty to thirty-six Music Street. That was a Wawa, if that's how you pronounce it, I don't know, I've never been in a WAWA store, but what's happened to it? Does anybody know? Have there been licenses to do any demolition or actually build a thing?
I don't know, we can probably get an update on that for you.
Okay.
I'm not sure, to be honest with you.
Oh, yeah, yeah, the pilots. What about Sorento? Has that just fallen off the, the list?
We did receive somewhat of an update with regards to what, where they're at.
That's correct, sir, there was not much of an update, so I'll have to follow up.
The last time the chief was in, I think the money that was in the capital budget, don't quote me on it right now, but it's around two hundred and fifty thousand. I think it was going to, well, I know it was going to refurbish the classrooms there, but that was the last update we got on that building.
I mean, we're supposed to be making revenue from that place, too. How much have we collected so far?
I don't, I don't think-
Probably zip, yeah. Okay, I guess I'll quit there for tonight. Thank you.
Tom Poyn, Menucha. Saw the request for a discussion following the September flooding. It's nice we're having discussions about flooding to see whether or not we can actually give tax relief to people. You know, it would be really inspiring if this body, who can create an ordinance themselves, put forward an ordinance before the election that said, for a year or two years, the city of Scranton, I'm not talking about the school board, I'm not talking about the county, I'm talking about this jurisdiction, would say to those people who are impacted on it, "We are giving you tax forgiveness for those two years," or a year, something. This body has the power to put forth ordinances itself. It doesn't have to wait for the mayor to propose something. It doesn't have to wait for, to go for the legal department and everything else. This body has its own attorney, and this body can, under its own wisdom, say, "This is the right thing to do," and say that these people deserve, not a builder for a ten-year tax abatement, but a person who was devastated in their home, and whether they're evicted from it or suffering great damage from it, should not be under the burden of taxes for one or two years. It's an exception, I understand that, but I think the population of Scranton would stand behind that exception and wouldn't challenge it, because it's humanitarian and it's the right thing to do. It doesn't stink of greed. It's been one hundred and thirty-three days since the council introduced creating the overtime reports. I've heard that DPW is working, they're working on a plan with DPW to come in, come into alignment with what the police department does and fire department does, but the ordinance that was put here before this body was not just about DPW, it was about the entire city. It was about every city worker here in this body who does overtime needs to record it. That includes the administration, that includes license and inspection, that includes everyone, not just DPW, not just the fire department and the police department, who are in compliance with that, which we already know. Why is it taking one hundred and thirty-three dollars for feedback? Obviously, because no answer is forthcoming. Now for, I have a question for Mr. McAndrew.
Sure.
I've looked forward at, and you've pointed out that Jesus and what's right and wrong often on a dais. During COVID and now with increased utility costs, support of the safety net is even more critical. We have given forty-five thousand dollars to agencies who direct, do direct food for survival, at the same time giving double that to a bar, quadruple that for a study on walking, seven times that amount for electric cars, and twenty-five times that for park studies. And what I mean by park studies is park improvement studies that are now racked up, just in studies, one million, one hundred and forty thousand dollars, one hundred and twenty-nine dollars, compared to forty-five thousand dollars we've handed out to agencies that keep our population fed and hand out food for Thanksgiving so people can survive. Is there not something that this body can do and you can- Is there not something that this body can do and you can do to push forward to get more spending out of faith for those who are in need? And second, not a lot, not a lot of grants have been voted down, but sometimes you have struck down grants. And some people have said your resistance is obstructionary to some of the free money. I'd like you to talk to about the, why once a grant comes up that you have an argument with it, why you would obstruct that from going forward? What is your reasoning behind, even though it's free money, sometimes we shouldn't be spending it? Thank you, and I hope to get your answer in fifth order.
Sure.
Good evening, counsel. Thanks for having me. Pat LaFrance, city resident. I was here last week and I asked about a law that was passed in November 2022 about ordinances and what a homeowner is and a duplex in a city. Has anybody looked into that or heard anything?
Did we get a response as of yet?
That request was sent out to licensing and inspection, specifically Mr. Tom Olefsky. We did pull the ordinance and from a council standpoint, Mr. LaFrance is correct. So we're just waiting on an answer.
All right, and in the meantime, while I'm waiting on an answer, I got 15 days to reply to that denial. And it's going to cost me $300 of my money that I'm not going to get back, that I'm going to go and somebody's going to say, yeah, that's right, you're right, there's the law playing right there. But because of somebody's opinion, and you know what? All right, I'm gonna, I'm. I know I should do it, but I don't want to, but I wouldn't. I was hoping you get, counsel could help me out tonight. I received a letter from Department of License, Inspections and Permits. I received this letter on October 7th. It was dated Harrisburg, October 5th. It was dated on the letter, September 28th. Can I bring this up to you and show you this?
Please.
It's, it's a little, it was a, it was great. But there's one line right there. I hope that you can take a look at that, see that and tell me what that's going on. That has nothing to do with me, that has nothing to do with the city of Scranton.
So, the line you're referring to is 726 Pleasant Avenue, Peckville, sent via U.S. certified and regular mail.
That's a city document that pertains to me. That's between me and the city. Why is that address even on there?
I, I do not know, but if, would you be okay with leaving, not leaving this, but having a copy made?
Absolutely, absolutely.
Kathy can do later and then.
Absolutely, yeah.
I'll let the others, council persons, look at it. We'll, we'll take a look at that for you, definitely.
I heard that one, too.
Thank you.
Do you have something else for us to look at? Do you have something else for us to look at?
No, I don't. I don't have anything else. I'm going to say it. What's happening to me is a shakedown in this city. What hap, what's happening to me right now is something personal from somebody. And I don't like it. And I'm going to have to put $300 of my money, my own money down to fight somebody about something personal that has nothing to do with this city. By the way, Mr. Schmel, I've never met you. You have my respect as a councilperson. You have my respect as a businessperson. And you have my utmost respect for where you live. That was my paper route when I was a kid. And I appreciate what you're doing to the neighborhood there. But as a contractor, can I ask you? If I wanted to divert my way around the city licensing zone and permits and I wanted to come and get a permit to work on my house from you, how much would you charge me?
If you wanted me to pull a permit for you?
Yeah, you're a contractor in the city of Scranton, right? So if I came up to you and I say, Mr. Schmel, I need a con, a permit for my house, how much would you charge me to go and get me a permit and let me do the work on my house with your name on it, your contracting business?
I would not.
You wouldn't do that? I appreciate that answer, that's an honest answer. City needs to look into what's going on with me.
I, I did see that, the address on top of there. I did see that on occasion, that it came up because they use Lackawanna County base. I've seen that come up on other things with multiple addresses on it. I'm not saying that's what that is. But that's the first thing that came to my mind. I've seen other documents that have gone out from licensing inspection. And they have mailed it out to a different, because it was a different owner. But I, I don't know how long you've owned that house, so, you know, that, I don't know where that came from.
How long have I owned the house? Oh, I've owned the house since 2005. And before I owned the house, I know the guy who lived there and I know the family.
That wasn't, they didn't live in Peckville?
No.
Yeah, that's the only, that's the only time I have seen that before, is the information they use. They use the same database sometimes to, to get addresses.
All right, well, my time is over, but I'll be back next week because I'd like to get an answer from council. Well, I get, I guess I got the answer tonight. That as far as council is concerned, I'm a homeowner, right? Isn't Mr. Vogelberg, isn't that which?
Correct.
Okay, all right, thank you.
So are you, are you going to file the right to know? Is that what you're saying? You're going to file it now?
File a right to know? Well, I, I'm going to file two personal complaints. I'm going to file, I filed a right to know today. I'm gonna, I'm, I'm gonna, I'm gonna use my voice and tell everybody. I'm not going to say any names, but I'll tell you my whole story. And it's amazing that it's going on in the city of Scranton. Unreal. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening, counsel. Dave Dobson, resident taxpayer. Once again, I'm back on 501(c)(3) and (c)(4), tax-exempt organizations that seem to feel free to stick their nose in the partisan politics. Currently, our sale of the sewer plant, which the advocate that was hired by some of the colleges and Lackawanna, Scranton, Lackawanna Chamber of Commerce. And now my water and sewer bill is up about $900 a year. I spent most of the last three years on the porch because I have comorbidities that I can't take a risk on a restaurant. If I go outside, it might be the Italian festival is one of our favorites. The races got ruined with the no smoking crowd. They jumped my wife over her vape pipe and that was it, I can't even get her in to watch a race on television where vaping is required, by the way. And if you want to light a cigarette, feel free. It's my damn house. You don't have to go out on the porch either, by the way. But I'm not really big on associations. Through the years here, I mean, it's everything from the size of family planning to the city scape, streetscape, and you name it. And it costs the average jerk money. It costs them a lot of money. I'm not fond of the streetscape, that I'll get right back to. But I have something to say about some of the comments that were made earlier. There was a hospital bombed when I got home in Gaza. And one side's blaming the other back and forth. It had to be a considerable force. It turned a hospital about the size of CMC or slightly smaller into a crater. There's 300 people dead. And somebody's either trying to sabotage any peace negotiations or whatever. Furthermore, with the Taliban, 80% of the troops were withdrawn at the objection of our allies in Afghanistan before Joe Biden took office. The Taliban were negotiated with in Camp David by invitation, by invitation. So it's like time that everybody stops using the blame game. Because I'm sick and tired of people blaming things on other people that they are partially responsible themselves for. It's back in '08, we had a councilman, wasn't a councilman, he's standing out front protesting Kandorski. Well, that basically ruined the taxpayers. We invited the man and we have all these people out there protesting against the bailout. And it looked really bad for us. And I called and apologized, I was the videographer at the time. And they said, we know who, who is behind it. But that same councilman, when he mentioned the recession that it started in 2009, well, why were you protesting out in front of City Hall in 2008 if it started after Obama took office? Nobody's all that great. There's mistakes on both sides. I'm a little mad at the Democrats over the voting and so forth. But apparently I'll have to handle the rest next week. It's about time we start to remember our history. If you're familiar with history, you're not a fool. Thank you, have a good night.
Thank you. Would anybody else like to speak?
Hello, counsel, I'm Rick Whittle, from Scranton. I was pleased to read in the Times Tribune that the Lackawanna budget was passed with no new taxes. What we need is less spending, county down to city. There's many things that cut into good government. Like, you hear about the Lotto, you know? And they, they say on their state form for the Lotto, you know, it helps the elderly and you're watching it and one individual gets billions, billions of dollars. But it really doesn't happen that way. I mean, that's the narrative. The, the state funds are intercepted by, by many mandates of, of like Scranton Housing Authority, who refuse to do my, my PA rent rebate. And that's it. I mean, the, the area agency on aging, I'm going broke making copies for them. I mean, I've been going to them for 10 years, been through four social workers. All these social workers are being paid and, you know, it's their, their duty to protect the elderly and they're, they're doing the opposite. They farm, they were put in charge by William Browning, the head of Health and Human Services. They, they put them, area agents on aging, in charge of what is called ERET funding, which was the funding to help people during COVID. And it's part of the trillions of dollars of the American Rescue Act. All these agencies, they're just moving money around. And it's, it's, they farm out their, their ERET funding to a company, a private company in Philadelphia. Just, just as Scranton Code Enforcement farms out their inspections to NIEC or NEIC, this private company, which the lawyers can control and everything. At what cost? I mean, if they, if they can't do their job, they should be fired, not farm it out. Let's see, the biggest problem, like with area agents aging, they don't keep any records. I keep going to them and, oh, we shred them after six months, you know? And I'm giving them stacks of paper, just like I do with Lackawanna Pro Bono and Northeast Penn Legal. And they ignore it. They come to court, it's a kangaroo court. And the court does not have records. They should televise. If they're evicting people, they, they have a, an idea. Like, I've been through the family court where all there's, there's no record, you know? They, it's for the children, we're protecting the children. That's why there's no record. Why is there no videotaping of the Scranton Board of Commissioners meetings every, first Monday of every month? Why is there no record of what happens in the magistrate court? Because hundreds, hundreds and thousands of people are being evicted and they're becoming homeless and then it becomes another problem. What are we going to do with the homeless and the police? We need new leadership locally. City and county record-keeping must be enforced by law. If we do nothing, we will lose our city, county, state and country. There has to be accountability, records. Because what they're doing, they're just, they can't do their job and they're farming it out and all this money's going away. And the people are just watching it on, you know, watching the news on TV and it's, it's, it's a bad situation. You gotta keep records and make records available for people and start the right to know. Start the right to know right here. So we know who's working at Scranton Housing Authority, who's working in, in all these farmed-out situations. My time's up.
Yes, thank you. Okay, is there anyone else that would like to speak?
Evening, counsel. Darwin Shaw, Scranton City Resident. A couple of questions, but my biggest concern right now, because I, the only thing I had to do was watch all the meetings from, say, for about six months. Ms. Oldewynus has been in this chamber since about 2000, acquiring about a lot in the city and she's dead on, especially down to finances. But my biggest concern as a homeowner, how come this gentleman can't get a permit to put any type of, do any type of home improvements as long as he, if he is a landlord in his own house? Not a landlord, but a, a property owner, let's say. He should be able to refurbish his windows, put up plywood and things like that without applying for a permit. Honestly, I fully believe if he pays his taxes, he does his dues for a city, he's entitled for that. Number two, I didn't know that Kaiser Valley was by fawn wood. I got family in Fawnwood. There is a 24-inch pipe that's been broke for a long time. The pump house flooded in 2018, and I'm only 32, I remember that because my aunt lives in Fawnwood, and she's been there for about 25 years. And my brother rides quads. There is a beautiful field down there that always gets flooded. I don't know if it's the Falcons Field or anything, but if a walkability study has been done for our city, I'm pretty sure that a study has been done for flood mitigation, is that anybody put forth a plan to not only, if you can refurbish the new pump house, or even raise the electrical equipment, or Fukushima, take a page out of Fukushima, somebody said that, the gentleman right there, and let the water flow, put, I'm not an engineer, I'm sorry, but put a pump system that will force the water up somewhere. I don't know, I can't even speak about that right now, but is there a walk, is there a study done for the pump house at all? Does anybody know?
There was a study, and now, after the study, now is the planning and then construction, construction stage.
So that's talking.
So some of the points you made have been somewhat addressed, or they're looking at?
Yeah, yeah, and that's coming from administration. I want to just give my greatest respect to you guys, because it's a lot when you have to acquire information from individuals, you know, you guys are doing the best you possibly can. Number three will be safety. There's a little village by Scranton High of homeless individuals. I'm sorry to say that, but they're too close to our children, and I know that you guys can't do anything as council members, but I didn't hear of an individual getting thrown off a bridge, but I did hear of a lady biting somebody around our kids. And as an individual who does want to stand for this city, and I am, despite everything, that gentleman deserves to be protected if he's getting paid from us to protect and serve, you know? But our children deserve to have a safe educational environment to thrive in, you know, without all that homelessness. So if we can, can we try to refurbish some type of building and relocate them individuals there safely so they can be monitored? Because my biggest concern is somebody, I like to run now, somebody running on that path and getting snatched up by anybody, women or female, that's not okay, and that's a bad publicity look for our city in a whole. And then the tax exempt, can we please, due to council being the legislative body of holding taxes and the money, can you at least think about six months of giving individuals tax relief from them homes getting damaged through the flooding? Six months to a year is not bad, and if we are going to take a hit financially, at least we can see it beforehand, and those families, those individuals don't have to stress about, you can ease their burden, let's just say, if we can give them some type of tax relief. I fully believe anybody needs help, everybody needs help. Due to pride, like the police chief said, a lot of people are scared to ask for it. They don't want to get shunned, they don't want to get turned away. We got to speed up, I got 30 minutes. Do the acoustics get fixed? Is there planning on having new acoustic equipment come here so the individuals can hear in public caucus? Because I fully believe they deserve to hear. They don't, even if they don't have to reply, but they at least could hear something to know what's going on, you know? And that's about it right now, I'm sorry. And great to see you guys, you know? That's it.
Okay, thank you. All right, is there anyone else that would like to speak?
Fifth order, 5A motions.
Mr. Smearle, do you have any motions or comments?
Yes, Mr. Voldenberg, about six weeks ago, we sent Code Enforcement up to the unit block of southwest Scranton Avenue. I believe they were, they applied for storage units, and I don't know what work was going on there, but it had seemed to have ceased at that point. But it seems they are back to work again. So if it can save, send Code Enforcement back up there. It's a unit block, it's a warehouse on the right-hand side. I'm sure they'll know where it's at because they've had multiple complaints, but I'd like to see a report on what's really going on there.
I will, sir.
And Mrs. Reedy, again, the 2000 block of Lavelle Court, the court that's not there anymore, if we can find out DPW have made it there yet, or if they plan on going there, just to see if they can do anything with it this year.
I will.
And my other thing is, Naug Park, there's a nonprofit organization, it's OnetreePlanted.org. They donated 20 trees to Naug Park, and they also donated lunch today and shovels and, among other things, they spent about $7,000, it was all donated to the park, to plant 20 trees. We had, 20 volunteers came up from Keystone Automotive, and they were the ones that set the trees and the ground and stuff. And Sam Kuchwara, Sammy and Bobby Shoemaker had the machine up there, and they dug the 20 holes. So I'd like to thank OnetreePlanted.org, and also Keystone Automotive for sending those 20 people up, and Sam Kuchwara, and Bob Shoemaker for all the work they do at Naug Park. That's all I have.
Thank you. Mr. Schuster, do you have any motions or comments?
Something I'm going to say is a repeat of the last few weeks. Mr. Voldenberg, I know I asked for the last two weeks in a row, we've been getting emergency declarations, and I just requested a list of the emergency actions that have been taken under those declarations. I know as of yesterday, we didn't get any response. Have we received a response as of today?
We didn't. I expect them by Friday for the administration.
All right, thank you very much for inquiring about that. So, as was just said, we've been passing emergency declarations, this will be the third one tonight, and we haven't had a response on any actions that were taken under those declarations. When looking at some of the projects done in Kaiser Valley, which do need to be done, some of the creek work in there has cost over a million dollars, so they could be rather expensive if we're talking about the flood, and I would like council to have a chance to look at them and see what we're dealing with as these things are being passed in our emergency declaration. So that's something to think about as I move towards my vote tonight on our emergency declaration tonight. I did ask a couple of questions that we got answers last week to. I asked about 7F from, I would say, three weeks ago, was the, was a $2 million grant with match funding for Wyoming Avenue Street project that was referred to as the Complete Streets Project. When looking into this, lots of cities have developed complete streets programs, so my question on that was, are we adopting a complete streets program? I'm not sure if these things are going to be implemented one by one as we receive grant funding, but the answer I got was, the Complete Streets Program is being evaluated by the administration. So I don't know if it's something we're piecemealing together, but that was the answer I received as of right now. I asked for a vehicle list several times, I've gotten incomplete lists. I didn't need to have any city employees' addresses, anything like that, but I just asked for a list of individuals who have vehicle lists. The only answer I got was that the administration is in receipt of my request. I made a inquiry, inquiry about the reservoirs above Newton Road. As my first week on council, I did take the flood manager for DPW and the mayor on a tour of Kaiser Valley. I did start by going to the turnpike and taking a look at the reservoirs above Newton Road, as some of those flood patterns had changed of the 2018 storm, and I asked if the administration, because I did ask at that time if they would reach out to the Turnpike Commission. The answer was, chief judge is working with relevant authorities and has reached out to the Turnpike Commission as one of those authorities to coordinate relief efforts and planning. The city is also working with GPI, who did the Kaiser Valley study, to address the situation in a holistic manner. And we will work with all relevant stakeholders, authorities, including the Turnpike Commission to address flooding prevention. So something that's been known, but I guess on the plan as we move forward. The last thing I had asked for was, it's been asked several times here in public comment about our rental ordinance, and it was a good idea that came up. It was about the University of Scranton, they have rental properties there, and if we're using this rental ordinance on those properties that are being rented up there. And, let's see, the answer I got was, the administration respectfully requests more information from council as to what fee in mind it is and the justification for that. So if we could just reach out to the administration and ask, are we going to use our current rental ordinance and our rental fee on rental properties that are owned by the University of Scranton? The last one is Lackawanna Avenue Trash Pickup. If we could just reach out to possibly DPW and see if the trash receptacles downtown are on a regular list for cleanup, as one of the residents tonight said those trash cans are full.
I will, sir.
Thank you very much, Mr. Voldenberg.
I think counties, the county does it, or I heard that they do, or some of it, just maybe we need clarification on that, too.
I will.
Just, you know, as part of the work. Sorry.
No, that's all.
For my own information.
That's all.
Okay, Dr. Rothschild, do you have any motions or comments?
I have a few things just to bring forward about a couple of properties. The first, we had received an email on earlier, and it's a neighbor that I've been in communication with, and I think we've previously had, you know, quality-of-life tickets given to this property, and it could have been cleaned up in the past, but it's once again quite overgrown. It's next to, he has a property, and then his mother lives in a property next to it, and then there's an empty lot. And I know there's been issues with animals there as a result, and, you know, it's just unpleasant having that next door to their property, and it's actually up for sale, too, but I don't know who would want to buy that property in its condition. But that address is 717 Harrison Avenue, and I don't believe Mr. Voldenberg was included on this email, so I'm going to go ahead and forward that to you so that we can once again get Code Enforcement over there. And I took a look at our Code Enforcement report, and the address is on there from over the summer, and it did say that citations were issued, but there wasn't any further updates, so I'm wondering if, you know, if there was ever an attempt to bring it forward to the magistrate, so wanted to check in on that.
I will, Dr. Rothschild.
Thank you. And an address I brought up last week, I still haven't received an update on, and I didn't see it on our list, was 723 Wheeler Avenue, and there were a number of different complaints from neighbors there at that property, so I'd like if we could ask for an update again on that.
I will.
And another property that I wanted to bring forward, that there was a request to see if animal control could come out to this property, and that's at 1068 Cottage Avenue, and it's not occupied, I believe abandoned and condemned, and there have been cats that have made it their home, and that's causing issues for the neighbors.
I will, that's currently on the demolition list, I'll follow up on the animals.
Okay, if there's something they could do to get the cats removed, at least in time, but I don't know when the demo is planned for, so that's all that I have. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. King, do you have any motions or comments?
Just something real briefly. I want to thank DPW for the tremendous job they did in the 1500 block of Cherry Street. There was a serious drainage issue there. They were able to put in some kind of pipe across the street, some kind of French drainage, and it really helped resolve a major drainage issue that was occurring in that section of Cherry Street, so I want to thank them for that. And I'm hopeful that I will be able to return to council in person next week. That's all. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. So, sitting in as vice president, I get notes of responses to inquiries from the week before. Most of them were covered during public participation, so I'll just go through them. All right, and then I will speak to my motions or comments. So, of course, we received an emergency declaration on Friday, October 13th, 2023, related to the localized flooding that occurred on September 9th, 2023. That will extend the emergency powers necessary through October 20th, 2023. This declaration appeared in third order at this evening's meeting, and the related legislation will appear on next week's agenda for review and passage. Joan Haddowan was asked last week a question about the payroll prep tax, so the city finance director advised that the payroll prep tax collections are on track for this year. Also, the mayor and city council president sent correspondence on October 11th to the Scranton School District in Lackawanna County for a discussion to explore potential avenues for relief to those residents negatively impacted by the September 9th flooding event. Mr. Elman sent a request to Code Enforcement to follow up regarding 136 Troop Street and 11 Troop Street. Pennsylvania America Water Company has plans to install an underground water tank on Well Street, excuse me, near Leggins Creek to control water flow in this area. For one of Mrs. Schumacher's questions, we answered a couple of them in fourth, so there's one here. DPW confirmed they will have the road work signs removed from East Mountain Road. So you inquired about that. That is all I have, so my stuff, okay? So, Mr. Voldenberg, we had Mr. Rains here a couple of weeks ago. He has ongoing issues forever. He's been somewhat pacified by the administration and DPW, and, you know, I made a statement two weeks ago, enough's enough. Are they resolving his issues? You reached out, did we hear anything back?
I'll reach out again to the director. We did not.
That's disheartening. Please follow up with that, and I know you will. So, about two weeks ago, South Scranton Little League reached out to me. They have a beautiful organization back there, they do a lot of great things, great kids, and I was there on an October night, and I was covered in mosquitoes. So where they showed me the issue lies is in center field, they were told in '21 or '22 that they're on the list, on the good list, with regards to having some stormwater issues resolved, because they, what happened was, they always took in water back there, but not as much, but after a project up West Mountain, I'm sorry, East Mountain, it created a bigger problem. So administration or sent people there, they're aware of the issue, but they were told two years ago, you're on the list. So this year, compounded with, you know, the storm of the century, it got worse. I was there, there's standing water. I believe Mr. Teeman was involved in that assessment, and he seems to believe it's an easy fix, but, you know, he needs the direction of administration. So my understanding is, these fine folks talked to, the current head of DPW, because they talked to Mr. Wes Pryor, who said, yeah, you're on the list. So where I guess the current director said, you're not on the list. So a couple of weeks ago, we sat with administration, they said, we have some disaster money, we're moving some disaster money. And my understanding, and I looked at it, and it's a simple fix, they got to dig a trench, put some pipe in, I guess the materials are here within the city and DPW, the expertise is here, but to be removed from a list, I have a problem with. So if it's not that expensive, it doesn't appear to be from what I was told by these folks, but they want to get back on the list. There's no reason to be off the list. So could you reach out to city administration, find out what's going on? Because we all know what happened to that poor guy who received bacteria from that water, and we all know about standing water and mosquitoes, and there's a bunch of kids there. And, you know, I'm worried, I'm concerned about them, this is a public safety issue that needs to be addressed. And reach out to Mr. Teeman, see what his thoughts are on this, because he's our expert with regards to that, and get us an answer and get back to us, have them get back to us by the end of the week.
I'll reach out in the morning, sir.
All right, because we've got to take care of them kids out there. All right, and then next, what else do I have? So Mr. Coin brought up a great idea, and, you know, it's not the first time he brought it up, and this has been discussed for a couple of weeks. We got to give some type of tax relief to the, because of the burden that was incurred by these poor people affected by the flood, right? I think even the mayor agreed to it, it's Mrs. Cipriani during caucus, when they were here, yeah, we could probably do something. But just saying we can probably do something and not taking action, because that's three weeks ago, and saying, yeah, we could probably do something. So, and Mr. Coin is right, so even if the administration did something, it would have to come down to us for a vote. So maybe we do it ourselves and not wait any longer, or at least we'll give the mayor maybe a couple of days to acknowledge they're going to do something, and if not, we'll give it the benefit of the doubt, we'll give it like three or four days. I think one of us can get a hold of her and get some type of commitment. But if not, Solicitor Gallagher, take a look at creating an ordinance to provide such relief. Okay? Thank you. Also, Mr. Coin brought up that some people consider me an obstructionist with my no votes. That's fair, but of course I'm going to defend myself. I always defend my no votes with rationale and reason why I'm voting no, and that they're always based on my own thought process, all right? Generated from my own opinion, no one else's, on behalf of the residents, what I think is in their best interest. So, when I vote no for a grant, first of all, a grant isn't free. People, some people have the misconception it's free money. Grants are taxpayer money, whether, how they're funded to here, it still comes from taxpayers. And the only time I vote no, because for the most part, I vote for 95% of legislation that's sent down to us. I do, 95%. So the 5% I have a problem with, and I don't think it's in the best interest of the residents, I vote no for. And I own my vote, and I explain my no vote with great detail, and I can live with that vote, and I go to sleep well with that vote. But, and I kind of get why would you vote against a grant? And the only time I vote against a grant, it's not free money, but I vote against a grant when I don't like the way it's used, or there's no way to sustain that. So a grant for something for one year, and the person or a hire is going to stay here for three, guess what? It's called unsustainability, and then guess who has to pick up the next three years? The residents and the taxpayers. Do I like voting against grants? Not really, but I'll vote against them if I don't agree with the process or if they can't be sustained. And that's when I vote at no for grants. I voted no for grants. I'm not going to name them all right now, but every grant I voted no for, I had a good reason, and not just to be an obstructionist or just to vote no to be the bad guy. No, I have rationale and reasoning, and I stand by my no votes, and, you know, when it comes to grants, they have to be sustained. Otherwise, you guys pick up the tab. And I think that is all I have. It is all I have. Thank you.
5B for an introduction and ordinance ratifying the extended local declaration of emergency issued by the office of the mayor and authorizing the office of the mayor to exercise and enforce the emergency powers necessary to preserve health, welfare, and safety of the citizenry of the city of Scranton as a result of the localized flooding that occurred on September 9th, 2023 through October 13th, 2023.
At this time, I'll entertain a motion that item 5B be introduced into the proper committee.
Sammoot.
Second.
On the question?
On the question, bringing up the term obstructionist, I'd like to think that I ask relevant questions in a reasonable amount of time. So we've, this is the third emergency declaration we have passed, and for the last two weeks, I've asked for the actions that the administration has taken while using this emergency declaration. I gave the first two. I allowed it to happen, but I have asked for what actions have been taken, and I have not received an answer yet. And yet again, another emergency ordinance is on my desk for passage. So I'm going to vote no tonight on 5B, and I'm waiting to hear the answer for those emergency actions. And the reason I vote no sometimes is because I want to make sure that we don't have runaway costs and because we are the oversight body of the city. And one thing I'd like everybody to keep in mind is we meet weekly. So if something can't be passed last week, it could be passed this week. It's not a monthly meeting like other boards in the city or the county. That's all I have to say on that.
Thank you. Anyone else on the question? I have the same issue as Mr. Schuster. We need an explanation. We asked for an explanation. We should get it. We're council. We don't have to do right to knows. We ask simple questions that we either don't get the answer to, or we get a roundabout answer that doesn't make any sense. Is it intentional? I hope not, but it appears to be. They want us to approve these emergency declarations quickly, but they don't want to help us with rationale and how the money's being used. This money does have to get to the poor people that are affected and need the flood. So I'm not going to vote no for introduction, but guess what? I want answers the same as Mr. Schuster by final passage. Okay? Thank you. Anyone else on the question? Okay, so all those in favor of introductions signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
No.
The ayes have it, and so moved.
I make a motion to suspend the rules to move item 5B to sixth and seventh order for a final vote.
Second.
On the question?
On the question, I'm going to be voting no to move this from fifth to sixth to seventh order in final passage tonight in hopes that we get answers by final passage.
Okay. Like I said earlier, I'll move it, you know, and we'll see what happens. All right. But we need information forthcoming in how this money's going to be dispersed. All right, so on the question, all those in favor signify by saying aye. Aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
No.
The ayes have it, and so moved.
5C for an introduction resolution, authorizing the mayor and other appropriate city officials to execute and enter into a contract with Breakpoint Law to perform professional registry services, including but not limited to managing and maintaining a registry of foreclosed properties in the city of Scranton.
At this time, I'll entertain a motion that item 5C be introduced into its proper committee.
Sammoot.
Second.
On the question?
On the question, when it comes to this resolution, I know that Solicitor Gallagher had a few questions. I was hoping to get our own council caucus tonight, but that did not happen as we had the police and fire chiefs in. But there was some questions about some of the backup information, affidavits, and I think we need some clearer answers on some of the costs. And one of my questions is, have we had services such as this in the past? I know Solicitor Gallagher, we didn't really get to speak about this in caucus. Is there any, there might possibly be an auto renewal in here? Is there any questions that you had?
I just want the affidavits attached, the insurance certificates attached, as the backup some indicates, but there seems to be, they seem to be missing. Additionally, it says, the backup says initially three years renewable on an annual basis. The contract states it's a year with the option to renew after a year, up to three years, so just one clarification on that. And the cost indicates it's $100 for signup fee, and then 20% of penalties and interest. What are the penalties and interest of, though? Is what I don't know. Is it penalties and interest for not signing up the property or some other fee or services that is associated with this? So just those questions, probably before you should pass this.
All right. Thank you very much.
I'll ask those questions.
And we'll get a list of questions together for you, Frank. Thank you.
Okay, so, at this time, I'll entertain a motion that item 5B be introduced into its proper committee. It was already, okay, so on the question, anyone else? All those in favor of introductions signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? The ayes have it, and so moved.
5D for an induction resolution, authorizing the mayor, office of economic and community development, and other appropriate city officials for the city of Scranton to execute and enter into an agreement with Quad Three Group, Inc., to provide national emission standards for hazardous air pollutants, asbestos inspection services for hazardous properties within the city of Scranton.
At this time, I'll entertain a motion that item 5B be introduced into its proper committee.
Sammoot.
Second.
On the question?
On the question, there were some similar questions with this contract as well, so I could speak with Attorney Gallagher and get some of those questions over to you, Frank, and hopefully we'll get them answered before final passage.
Yes, sir.
Anyone else? All those in favor by saying aye.
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 Aye. Opposed? The ayes have it, and so moved.
5E for an introduction resolution, appointment of Ryan Flanagan, Scranton, Pennsylvania, as a member of the planning commission for the city of Scranton, replacing Shurishby Patel, whose term expired May 24th, 2023, and was held over. Ryan Flanagan's four-year term will begin upon execution of the resolution and will expire on May 24th, 2027.
At this time, I'll entertain a motion that item 5E be introduced into its proper committee.
Sammoot.
Second.
On the question?
On the question, I was glad to see that this person's experience was in engineering. I think that'll be beneficial towards the planning commission, so I'm supportive of this appointment.
Anyone else? All those in favor of introductions signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? The ayes have it, and so moved.
5F for an introduction resolution, appointment of Alexander Plackey, Scranton, Pennsylvania, as a member of the Board of Ethics to fill the unexpired term of Patricia Mount-Dunleavy. Alexander Plack's term will begin upon execution of the resolution and will expire on August 31st, 2025.
At this time, I'll entertain a motion that item 5F be introduced into its proper committee.
Sammoot.
Second.
On the question? Okay, none heard. All those in favor of introductions signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? The ayes have it, and so moved.
5G for an introduction resolution, appointment of Selena Andiapan, Scranton, Pennsylvania, to serve as a member of the Board of Directors of the Lackawanna County Land Bank, replacing Mitesh Patel. Selena Andiapan's term is effective upon execution of the resolution and will expire on December 31st, 2025.
At this time, I'll entertain a motion that item 5G be introduced into its proper committee.
Sammoot.
Second.
On the question?
On the question, it was brought up tonight about the resume being attached, so if we could ask about the resume being attached to this, Mr. Waldenberg? And then also, I thought moving forward, some of these positions, we were going to delegate it to their title. Now I could be wrong. I know that Mr. Patel as treasurer was on possibly the tax board, and it was just done as city treasurer, but if we could just ask if this is something else that we'd like to just have the person's title on the resolution rather than the name.
I'll ask that, sir.
Thank you.
Anyone else? All those in favor of introductions signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? The ayes have it, and so moved.
5H for an introduction resolution, authorizing the mayor and other appropriate city officials to execute and enter into a contract with BKP Architects, PC, to perform a design for the outdoor Westonfield Pool Complex.
At this time, I'll entertain a motion that item 5H be introduced into its proper committee.
Sammoot.
Second.
On the question?
On the question, I hate to put you on the spot again, Solicitor Gallagher, but was there similar questions that we had with this contract as well?
I actually think that they have included everything.
Okay, all right. Thank you very much. If anything arises, Frank, I'll send it over to you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay. All those in favor of introductions signify by saying aye.
Aye. Aye.
Opposed? The ayes have it, and so moved.
5I for an introduction resolution, authorizing the mayor and other appropriate city officials to execute and enter into an easement substantially in the form attached heretofore as Exhibit A by and between PPL Electric Utilities Corporation, grantee, and the city of Scranton, grantor, for the property to be identified as county tax parcel number, as noted, located along Amelia Avenue.
At this time, I'll entertain a motion that item 5I be introduced into its proper committee.
Sammoot.
Second.
On the question? None heard. All those in favor of introductions signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? The ayes have it, and so moved.
5J for an induction resolution, amending resolution number 310, 2023, a resolution entitled, Appointment of Teresa Gritano, Ph.D., Scranton, Pennsylvania, as Member of the City of Scranton's Ethics Board for a Term of Five Years. Teresa Gritano, Ph.D.'s term is effective upon execution of the resolution and will expire on August 31st, 2028, to strike the term of five years and replace the same with three years.
At this time, I'll entertain a motion that item 5J be introduced into its proper committee.
Sammoot.
Second.
On the question? None heard. All those in favor of introductions signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? The ayes have it, and so moved.
Sixth Order 6A, reading by title, file to Council Number 91, 2023, in ordinance, establishing permit parking in the 800 block of Olive Street.
You've heard reading by title of item 6A. What is your pleasure?
Mr. Chairman, I move that item 6A past reading by title.
Second.
Excuse me. On the question? None heard? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye. Aye.
Opposed? The ayes have it, and so moved.
I make a motion to table item 6A.
Second.
There is a motion on the floor and a second to table item 6A. This ordinance is establishing permit parking on the 800 block of Olive Street, and is being tabled until the public hearing can be held next Tuesday, October 24th, 2023, at 5:45 p.m. On the question? None heard? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? The ayes have it, and so moved.
6B, formerly 5B, reading by title, file to Council Number 92, 2023, in ordinance, ratifying the extended local declaration of emergency issued by the office of the mayor and authorizing the office of the mayor to exercise and enforce the emergency powers necessary to preserve the health, welfare, and safety of the citizenry of the city of Scranton as a result of the localized flooding that occurred on September 9th, 2023, through October 13th, 2023.
You've heard reading by title of item 6B. What is your pleasure?
Mr. Chairman, move that item 6B past reading by title.
Second.
On the question?
On the question, I spoke about this when it was in fifth order. As it just moved from fifth order to sixth order, if it passes this vote, it will be in seventh order, and hopefully the rest of my members up here will make a motion to table until we get the information I've requested for the last two weeks.
All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed?
No.
The ayes have it, and so moved.
Seventh Order 7A for consideration by the Committee on Rules for adoption, resolution number 313, 2023, authorizing the mayor and other appropriate city officials to execute and enter into a contract with Performance High Fidelity to perform audiovisual services for the meeting space enhancements for City Hall.
As vice chairman for the Committee on Rules, I recommend final passage of item 7A.
Second.
On the question?
On the question, Mr. Waldenberg, did something come up earlier in the meeting about 6% tax?
That's correct. There was the bid amount, and then with the additional 6% sales tax, it brought it up to the $24,000 plus, which is still under the threshold of $25,000.
Gotcha.
The question was between the two numbers. So there's the bid, and then the tax included is...
The other proposal was $49,072, so it's just the backup appears the number is incorrect on it.
Sorry, could you say that one more time?
Appears the backup information is incorrect on it. It has a 23, 389, when it looks like the estimate is 24, 559, 84, the difference being the 6% tax of $1,178, 4.
Okay. Should we make a friendly amendment to include that that price needs to be changed?
Sure.
Solicitor Gallagher, shouldn't we be tax exempt? I mean, I haven't seen that added with the previous contracts.
I've never seen it with the other contracts either, so...
Okay, so perhaps we can make a motion to table this until we receive that response to make sure we're not paying more than we need to.
I would be happy to make a motion to table.
I'll second that motion.
Okay, there's a motion on the floor and a second to table. All those in favor?
Aye.
Table it. Aye. Opposed? The ayes have it, and so moved.
7B, formerly 6B, for consideration by the Committee on Public Works for adoption, file to Council Number 92, 2023, ratifying the extended local declaration of emergency issued by the office of the mayor and authorizing the office of the mayor to exercise and enforce the emergency powers necessary to preserve the health, welfare, and safety of the citizenry of the city of Scranton as a result of the localized flooding that occurred on September 9th, 2023, through October 13th, 2023.
What is the recommendation of the chairperson for the Committee on Public Works?
As chairperson for the Committee on Public Works, I recommend final passage... As chairperson for the Committee on Public Works, I recommend final passage of item 7B.
Second.
On the question?
On the question, I would like to make a motion to table item 7B until we get the information about what actions have been taken under emergency ordinance since these have been passed since September 9.
So there's a motion on the table and a second. All those in favor of tabling this to getting more information?
On the question?
I'm sorry. I'm sorry. On the question? Anyone else? Okay, so none heard?
On the question, we need to do a roll call.
Okay. All right then. Roll call, please.
On the question?
Roll call to table.
So this is to table. So we get further information as regards to the dispersment of these, the funds for the emergency declaration.
Okay.
How they're being used.
Roll call?
Yes, roll call, please.
Mr.?
No.
Mr. Schuster?
Yes.
Dr. Rothschild?
No.
Mr. McCandrew?
Yes.
Mr. King?
No.
Okay. So we...
All right, three nos. Motion fails. So let's go back to the resolution. What is the recommendation of the chairperson for the Committee on Public Works?
We're back to the resolution. As chairperson for the Committee on Public Works, I recommend final passage of item 7B.
Second.
On the question? On the question, we need information to make, of course, we don't want to hold up any funds, but when we ask week after week after week for information, it's our responsibility as council people up here to scrutinize. It's our job. I take it seriously. So, you know, tabling this failed, but so I'm going to be a no, just because of procedural and it's the right vote.
So earlier, so on the question, earlier in the meeting, I said I feel I ask relative questions in a timely manner. I felt I asked some relative questions in a timely manner here as we had two weeks to get the information for this, the passage of this, so I will continue to be a no.
Roll call, please.
Mr. Smurl?
Yes.
Mr. Schuster?
No.
Dr. Rothschild?
Yes.
Mr. King?
Yes.
Mr. McCandrew?
No. I hereby declare item 7B legally and lawfully adopted.
7C, previously tabled, file to council number 87, 2023. Amending file to council number 33, 2022, in ordinance, as amended, entitled, General City Operating Budget 2023, to increase the debt proceeds account, as noted, by $3,790,000 and to increase the court awards account, as noted, by $3,700,000 to allow for the payment of unbudgeted legal settlement payments.
What is the recommendation on the chairperson for the Committee on Finance?
As chairperson for the Committee on Finance, I recommend final vote of item 7C.
Second.
On the question?
On the question, this is labeled as unbudgeted legal settlement payments. I kind of feel that that's a misnomer. I will be voting no on this as I spoke to it previously.
All right, so on the question, I wanted to vote for the court-awarded settlement. It's the right thing to do. I asked for it, but it's bundled with a settlement for a company that paid to play with a previous mayor. Can't in good faith reward this company even though they say it was a breach of contract. Guess what? When they paid to play and were identified by the FBI as a co-conspirator, that was a breach of contract. So I asked, requested that they break this out, make it two resolutions, right? Didn't get a response from administration. So because of that, I can't in good faith, I can't feel good about this, no, because rewarding criminal behavior. Bundled. This never should have been bundled. This should not have been bundled. So anyone else on the question?
On the question, we did have discussion about the legal options that we had quite some time ago, and I'm also not happy about giving additional money to NRS after what happened. However, this is part of a legal settlement, and that's why I still feel the need to vote yes on it. If we were to vote no and it wasn't to pass, then what happens to that legal settlement? Solicitor Gallagher?
That would probably jeopardize the settlement, I believe.
So I'm not willing to do that.
But I would have to check with legal upstairs as I am not privy to what the settlement was. And when we asked for what the settlement negotiations and information was, I believe they did provide it to us, but redacted some of the information.
That's correct.
I don't know all the ins and outs of the settlements.
Okay. Thank you. I'm not a lawyer. I wasn't a part of the negotiations and settlement. Going to vote yes on this.
Okay, so in addition to on the question, there was a discussion. I said, let's fight it. Right? I wasn't heard. I didn't agree with the discussion or some type of consensus moving forward. I said, we need to fight this. I wasn't heard. So from the get-go, I didn't like it, and I don't like it anymore while it's being bundled and shoved through as a vote. Anyone else on the question?
Yes, on the question, I did not agree with the discussion at the time. I didn't agree with our stance that we were taking on it, and I do not know all the ins and outs of it as I wasn't privy to that information. I'll be voting no.
Okay, roll call, please.
Mr. Smurl?
No.
Mr. Schuster?
No.
Dr. Rothschild?
Yes.
Mr. King?
Yes.
Mr. McCandrew?
Three nos. Motion fails.
7D, previously tabled. Resolution Number 311, 2023. Authorizing the mayor and other appropriate city officials to execute and enter into a contract with Nelson Corporation, DVA Guide, to provide the city of Scranton's fire department with a first responder mental health and wellness mobile application.
What is the recommendation for the vice chairperson on the Committee of Public Safety?
As vice chairperson for the Committee on Public Safety, I recommend final passage of item 7D.
On the question?
On the question, I spoke to this last meeting as well as this meeting. I don't feel that a telephone app would be a good replacement for mental health. I would say I have to agree with our unions on this, and I think we could have used the money in a better manner than this application to provide mental health for our police and fire department.
Anyone else?
On the question, I did hear from the fire union and their rationale and what they're doing with the peer support program, and so I was happy to hear that that is going on and that's an option. I don't see this as a replacement for services. I see it as an addition to that, and I know, you know, if it was up to me to, you know, have like a peer discussion with my colleagues about my own mental health issues, then I wouldn't feel as comfortable as I would as using an app. And maybe part of that is my age, and the chief did point out that they feel like this will be geared towards maybe their younger firefighters or police officers who are going to be more apt to use this. And with COVID happening a few years ago, using apps and virtual communication with counselors, all that became, you know, much more popular. So I think this is moving in that direction of where some mental health services are at right now in our country. And I know that it's not going to replace any sort of counseling, and it's not a counseling service, but I don't find anything wrong with providing those resources to our firefighters and police officers, and I'm supportive of their mental health and whatever we could do as a city to be able to help them.
Okay, so on the question, as I stated earlier, I'm the chairman on the Committee on Public Safety, and I care a great deal about our brave police officers and our firefighters, especially their mental health, safety, and welfare. Did I listen to some union members? Yeah, and I have every right to, even though I might have been chastised or criticized a little bit by, but you know what? I'm here for them too. So I listened to them. I listened to both chiefs tonight, and like I said earlier, I don't want to say $18,000 is not a lot of money, but I will give that a shot and see, because you know what? There was no appetite to put that towards copay. Like Schuster was a great idea. I would agree with that, but you can see what's happened here all night. There's not three votes for much things. So if I can wave a wand and say, take that money, utilize it towards the copay for face-to-face therapy, I'd do it in a minute. But, so like I said earlier, I will vote yes for this. It's only one year. I'll keep my eye on it, and I'll keep my ear to the members that are either going to use it or not, and then we'll see from there for next year. Okay, so anybody else?
On the question, I agree with you, Mr. McCandrew. I'm willing to give this a shot for at least a year and evaluate it and see whether, you know, it's going to be utilized by the members. And I value the input of both the fire chief and the police chief, at least give them one more tool to be able to be available to our great firefighters and police officers.
Okay. Roll call, please.
Mr. Smurl?
Yes.
Mr. Schuster?
No.
Dr. Rothschild?
Yes.
Mr. King?
Yes.
Mr. McCandrew?
I hereby declare item 7D legally and lawfully adopted.
Eighth Order 8A, file to council number 64, 2023.
This ordinance is creating overtime reporting requirements for all city departments and employees. It has been tabled until we receive additional information from the administration.
8B, file to council number 87, 2023.
This resolution was taken from the table.
8C, Resolution Number 311, 2023.
This resolution was also taken from the table. If there's no further business, I will entertain a motion to adjourn.
Motion to adjourn.
This meeting is adjourned. Thank you.